Charlton Heston, who was a star of the first film there, The Agony and the Ecstasy, he came in person and did a little workshop for high school kids in the theater and introduced the first movie at the Cinecapri. And it was a big hit. And the thing about the Cinecapri, which rivaled a lot of the other theaters, and I can remember as a kid, you would decide which movie you were going to go to, and then you would go see which theater was showing it. Well, with the Cinecapri, the Cinecapri just going there was an event in itself. People went to the Cinecapri just to experience the luxury of it and the beauty of it. It was a destination in itself. People would go there for celebrations, or first dates, or some special kind of event. The Cinecapri primarily, in the early years anyway, ran just big movies, movies like Agony and the Ecstasy, which opened the theater. The Godfather was the only movie theater in Arizona that was showing The Godfather at the time. That Titanic, unfortunately, was the final theater, so the Cinecapri kind of sank right along with the movie Titanic at the same time. Star Wars opened there in 1977. The Star Wars, the first Star Wars, actually showed consecutively for a full calendar year. It was the longest run of Star Wars in the entire country. It was a very profitable movie to be shown. The whole theater was an event in itself. You could actually, they actually had, at one time, they had a dress code, if you could believe it. They didn't allow anybody to wear jeans. Females could not wear shorts. And sandals, you could not wear sandals. They actually had a published dress code to attend the Cinecapri movie theater, which sounds kind of odd today. For the opening, I actually saw an ad, you could send in money and preorder tickets for that opening movie of The Agony and the Ecstasy. So as years went by, the total of Cinecapri was open for about 32 years, from 66 to 98. It changed hands several times, different owners ran it. The final owner was a guy named Dick Harkins, who still, there's a lot of Harkins theaters around Phoenix and Scottsdale. And he owned it for, I think, about 10 years. The thing that got in the way of it continuing to succeed and be a presence in the valley was there was a different company that owned the land that the theater was on. Harkins owned the building.
Good afternoon. Thank you for attending. We will begin in about one minute. If you could please find your seats. Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us on June 4, 2025. We'll begin with an invocation from Police Chaplain Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank you, the council and staff, for all your dedication, time, and support. Would you please join me in a prayer of invocation? Lord, I come to you, reaching out and requesting your participation in our city council meeting today. I lift to you, our mayor, our city council, and their staff members. I believe you have selected and anointed every one of this leadership team, and for that, I thank you. These are precious and willing individuals that constantly share their leadership and talents. Father, I ask you to draw the mayor and council close to you, and granting them favor, wash them with your wisdom and discernment as only you can. Father, I also ask that you protect all of our city leaders, our city employees, thus keeping them healthy and safe. Lord, I thank you in advance for your grace, discernment, love, and extension to all of our city leaders. To you, Father, we give all the praise and glory. Amen.
Thank you. Chaplain, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll now call the formal meeting to order. Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilwoman Guadalupe.
Here.
Councilwoman Hernandez.
Here.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilwoman Waring.
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
Mario Barajas and Elsie Duarte are with us to provide interpretation. Mario, would you please introduce your team?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Mario Barajas. I'm going to be serving as an interpreter alongside with Elsie Duarte. I'll now take a moment to introduce ourselves to our Spanish-speaking audience and review a couple of guidelines with them. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Mario Barajas. Yo voy a estar sirviendo junto con mi colega, Elsie Duarte, como intérprete. Quisiera repasar con ustedes un par de apuntitos, los cuales nos podrán ayudar a poder interpretarles de la mejor manera posible. Primeramente, les pedimos de que hable de una manera lenta y clara, así para poder escuchar bien. Y segundo, como repaso, ya no es necesario hacer pausas cuando estén dando un comentario público. Pueden decir todo su comentario en su totalidad, y ya cuando terminen, el intérprete les va a interpretar. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mario. Will the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinances and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordnances number G-7390 through 7393, S-51958 through 52042, and resolutions 22306 through 22311.
Thank you. And can our legal team please explain public comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of the public may speak for up to two minutes to comment on agenda items. Comments must be related to the agenda item and the action being considered by the council. General comments that go beyond the scope of the agenda item must be made in the citizen comment session at the end of the agenda. The city council and staff cannot discuss or comment on matters relating to pending investigations, claims, or litigation. Additionally, any members of the public who appear before council in their capacity as a lobbyist must, as required by Phoenix City Code, disclose this fact before addressing council. The city code requires speakers to present their comments in a respectful and courteous manner. Profane language, threats, or personal attacks on members of the public, council members, or staff are not allowed. A person who violates these rules will lose their opportunity to continue to speak.
Thank you. Councilman Robinson, do you have a motion on item one?
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the formal meeting minutes from February 19, 2025.
Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Passes unanimously. Boards and commissions, item two. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve mayor and city council boards and commission nominations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. We'll now conduct a swearing-in ceremony for the citizens who are serving our community. Thank you. Please raise your right hand, aye, and then state your name.
I'm Louie Rodriguez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office of.
Discharge the duties of the office of.
State your board or commission.
Your board or commission.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you so much. Thank you for serving our community. We'd ask you to go behind the, so the council members can congratulate you. All right. Next, we go to the continued service of municipal court judge Alex Navidad, who has served us city with distinction, including helping move forward our specialty courts, community court, helping assist with veterans, a court, and more, and just trying to make sure that the city municipal court system serves our community as effectively as possible. So Vice Mayor, I recognize you for motion and any comments.
I move to allow for the swearing-in of Judge Alex Navidad.
Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Wonderful. Well, then, we will come back and do the swearing-in. Testing. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Alex Navidad.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office of.
Discharge the duties of the office of. Municipal judge.
Municipal court judge. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Wonderful. Welcome back. Thank you for your continued service to our community.
Thank you.
We will stay on item three, and I'll recognize Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to congratulate Judge Navidad. At one point, I sat on the police and fire committee, and that was one of the great honors to have, is when you're able to select different judges, and so I was very honored to be part of that. So I just want to congratulate him.
Thank you. The city provides an advisory role to the state of Arizona on liquor license applications, and we'll go to that portion of the agenda. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve items four through 16.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. City clerk, we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business planning and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
I move to approve items 17 through 124, except for the following. Items 27 through 32, 63, 74, 82, 84, 85, 93, 94, 96, 107, 122, 123, and 124. Noting that items 59 and 103 are being continued to June 18, 2025. Item 17 is as corrected per the memo dated June 4, 2025. Items 112 and 123 are as revised. And can the clerk confirm if there are any other items that should be excluded for in-person public comment?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, yes, just to clarify, item 75 is as corrected per memo dated June 4, 2025, and then also excluding items 54, 56, 70, 102, and 104. I'm going to repeat, that's items 54, 56, 70, 102, and 104.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would you read the additional items one more time?
Yes, Mayor. Items 54, 56, 70, 102, and 104.
Wonderful. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Guadalupe.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 90.
Thank you so much. Some exciting items moving forward, including support for the NCAA Women's Final Four. All right, we will next go to budget-related items. Item 27 is a public hearing on the 2025-2030 capital improvement program. I now declare the hearing open. Is there anyone wishing to speak? We do not have any cards. The public hearing is closed. Item 28 is the adoption of the 2025-2030 capital improvement program. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I move to, sorry, I move the adoption of Resolution 22309, the 2025-2030 capital improvement program.
Second.
Motion and a second. Comments? Roll call.
Guadalupe.
Yes.
Hernandez.
No.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 81.
Item 29 is a public hearing on the adoption of the tentative 2025-26 annual budget ordinances. We'll open the hearing. We do not have anyone wishing to speak. We will close the hearing. Item 30 is the adoption of the 2025-26 annual budget. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I move that item 30 being ordinance S-51960, the tentative 2025 through 2026 annual budget be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Councilwoman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. After going through extensive research over the past several weeks, listening to community members, reviewing budget documents with staff, and analyzing the impact of past spending along with weighing very likely financial impacts from the Trump administration, I remain confident in my decision to vote no on the proposed 2025-2026 fiscal year budget. I cannot in good conscience support a budget that continues to invest more in policing our residents rather than investing in our communities and the solutions that will address the root cause of the issues we are all facing. Year after year, we see more money funneled into law enforcement despite record-breaking overtime costs, a DOJ investigation that shows civil rights violations, no path to accountability for failures in policing policy, and a failure to meaningfully reduce harm. Meanwhile, we are still in the middle of a housing crisis and many other attacks from the current federal administration. We need to invest into the things that will allow all of our communities to thrive, like housing, mental health services, youth programs, and violence interruption. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Guadalupe.
Mayor, can I explain my vote?
Please do.
Yeah, I just want to take a moment to thank staff, Jeff, and everyone else that has definitely had some very challenging times as we are looking at the budget and looking at everything that we're doing to try to keep a balanced budget, to keep a lot of the programs going that we started a couple of years ago to address a lot of the challenges that we've seen in our community, which has allowed us to provide rental assistance for our residents as they're getting evicted, and helping people with their water bills, with their electricity bills, and making sure that we are able to look for a real solution around homelessness, which for me has been very frustrating as I continue to see other cities continue to dump the problem onto the city of Phoenix. So I'm very grateful to the team, to everyone that has made this budget thrive, even though we're going to continue to see very challenging times and a lot of hard decisions that we're probably going to have to make in the future, thanks to the state and thanks to a lot of folks coming after cities. I really appreciate everything that we've been able to do, and I'll be voting aye.
Thank you. We'll continue with roll call.
Hernandez.
No.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 81.
Item 32 is the adoption of the tentative 2025-26 re-appropriated funds budget. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I move that item 31 being ordinance S-52007, the tentative 2025 through 2026 capital funds budget be adopted.
Second.
Comments? Roll call.
Guadalupe.
Yes.
Hernandez.
No.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 81.
I was very excited for the re-appropriated funds budget, so now we finally get to item 32. This is the one to make sure we don't, we tie up the end of the year. Is that a fair description? Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I move that item 32 being ordinance S-51961, the tentative 2025 through 2026 re-appropriated funds budget be adopted.
Second.
Comments? Roll call.
Guadalupe.
Yes.
Hernandez.
No.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 81.
I was very excited for the re-appropriated funds budget, so now we finally get to item 32. This is the one to make sure we don't, we tie up the end of the year. Is that a fair description? Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I move that item 32 being ordinance S-51961, the tentative 2025 through 2026 re-appropriated funds budget be adopted.
Second.
Comments? Roll call.
Guadalupe.
Yes.
Hernandez.
No.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 81.
Item 54 is the authorization to amend the contract with Community Bridges for the Rio Fresco emergency shelter operations. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve item 54.
Second.
Stacy Champion is here to provide comment.
Hello, thank you, Mayor and Council. I just, I see, as many of you know, I've been doing volunteer outreach with our unsheltered community for over, well over 15 years now here in Phoenix, as well as all kinds of heat, respite things, and I see you all throw millions and millions and millions of dollars at CBI, yet I don't see deep dives into any accountability. As somebody who helps people from getting evicted to getting unsheltered people housed, this is an organization that in 2023 had $191 million in revenue. Their CEO makes over half a million dollars. A lot of the people up at the top making well over $250,000. They're always understaffed. The navigators are usually people who've been kind of through the system, and it's great that those people are getting an opportunity to have a job, but they are paid barely above minimum wage, which is not a livable wage. Many of them have a caseload of 30 people that they're trying to get housed. It is not effective. I don't understand why the city has not opened up the possibility to other organizations and service providers instead of putting all of your eggs in this basket that seems to me like they really benefit from keeping people unsheltered. That's a problem. There's a 78-year-old woman whom my councilwoman knows I've been trying to help for months now, since March, when I found her on the corner of Jefferson and 12th Avenue, who's still in shelter. Community Bridges had her in one of their behavioral health facilities and was paid over $20,000 for the less than two months that she was there. This is a broken system. Please stop throwing money at this organization that isn't really helping people who need to be helped. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pastor, and then Hodge Washington?
Thank you. Is it possible to have someone from OHS come to the table? Thank you. We'll start off a little bit about, let's talk a little bit about the measures of accountability that we use for our service providers. This is a question and a concern I've raised before, and I think it might be helpful for us to articulate what is currently being done and what is in the pipeline to ensure greater accountability. It is no secret that our budget does provide a lot of resources for our unsheltered population, but we want to make sure that we are spending money in a manner that allows for our residents, both sheltered and unsheltered, to get the maximum benefit. So we can talk a little bit of accountability, please?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Councilwoman Hodge Washington, thank you for that question. Yes, due to concerns brought to OHS from city council, we have initialized, or we've initiated additional measures of accountability in addition to what we currently have in place in the Office of Homeless Solutions. So first, currently in place in the Office of Homeless Solutions, we operate all of our shelter contracts on a reimbursement basis. So we are receiving reports on a monthly basis, along with reimbursement requests for those reports as far as expenses. We analyze those monthly. We also, in our human services department, we do an annual fiscal review of every organization that we have a contract with, but due to the concerns that have been brought by the council, the city auditor is also initiating a full audit of some of our organizations, including Community Bridges.
So thank you. That, to me, those touches, they touch more on the fiscal component of this. I really want to hear a little bit more about our plan to ensure the competency component of this, to make sure that the services that are being contracted for are provided in a manner that benefits those that are affected.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, thank you for that question. Yes, we, in addition to the reports that we're getting sort of an aggregate of what's happening at every shelter, we also investigate certainly any issues with specific clients or anything that's happening on the ground. I will speak specifically to the Rio Fresco Shelter, the one that we are considering requesting authorization for today. That shelter is our only non-congregate shelter that we have in our system right now for single adults. It has 117 units of non-congregate shelter, and has our highest positive exit rates. We're not going to do that. 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 We're not going to do that.
Reviewing budget documents with staff and analyzing the impact of past spending along with weighing very likely financial impacts from the Trump administration, I remain confident in my decision to vote no on the proposed 2025-2026 fiscal year budget. I cannot in good conscience support a budget that continues to invest more in policing our residents rather than investing in our communities and the solutions that will address the root cause of the issues we are all facing. Year after year, we see more money funneled into law enforcement despite record-breaking overtime costs, a DOJ investigation that shows civil rights violations, no path to accountability for failures in policing policy, and a failure to meaningfully reduce harm. Meanwhile, we are still in the middle of a housing crisis and many other attacks from the current federal administration. We need to invest into the things that will allow all of our communities to thrive like housing, mental health services, youth programs, and violence interruption. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call. Guardado.
Mayor, can I explain my vote?
Please do.
Yeah, I just want to take a moment to thank staff, Jeff, and everyone else that has definitely had some very challenging times as we are looking at the budget and looking at everything that we're doing to try to keep a balanced budget, to keep a lot of the programs going that we started a couple of years ago to address a lot of the challenges that we've seen in our community, which has allowed us to provide rental assistance for our residents as they're getting evicted and helping people with their water bills, with their electricity bills, and making sure that we are able to look for a real solution around homelessness, which for me has been very frustrating as I continue to see other cities continue to dump the problem onto the city of Phoenix. So I'm very grateful to the team, to everyone that has made this budget thrive, even though we're going to continue to see very challenging times and a lot of hard decisions that we're probably going to have to make in the future, thanks to the state and thanks to a lot of folks coming after cities. I really appreciate everything that we've been able to do, and I'll be voting yes.
Thank you. We'll continue with roll call.
Hernandez.
No.
Hodge, Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight one.
Item thirty-two is the adoption of the tentative 2025-26 reappropriated funds budget. Vice Mayor.
Did we miss thirty-one?
Did we do thirty-one? Okay. Thirty-one is the adoption of the tentative 2025-26 capital funds budget. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I move that item thirty-one being ordinance S-52007, the tentative 2025 through 2026 capital funds budget be adopted.
Second.
Comments? Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hernandez.
No.
Hodge, Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight one.
I was very excited for the reappropriated funds budget, so now we finally get to item thirty-two. This is the one to make sure we don't, we tie up the end of the year. Is that a fair description? Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I move that item thirty-two being ordinance S-51961, the tentative 2025 through 2026 reappropriated funds budget be adopted.
Second.
Comments? Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hernandez.
No.
Hodge, Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight one.
Item fifty-four is the authorization to amend the contract with Community Bridges for the Rio Fresco emergency shelter operations. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve item fifty-four.
Second.
Stacy Champion is here to provide comment.
Hello, thank you, Mayor and Council. I just, I see, as many of you know, I've been doing volunteer outreach with our unsheltered community for over, well over fifteen years now here in Phoenix, as well as all kinds of heat, respite things, and I see you all throw millions and millions and millions of dollars at CBI, yet I don't see deep dives into any accountability. As somebody who helps people from getting evicted to getting unsheltered people housed, this is an organization that in, in 2023 had $191 million in revenue. Their CEO makes over half a million dollars, a lot of the people up at the top making well over $250,000. They're always understaffed. The navigators are usually people who've been kind of through the system, and it's great that those people are getting an opportunity to have a job, but they are paid barely above minimum wage, which is not a livable wage. Many of them have a caseload of thirty people that they're trying to get housed. It is not effective. I don't understand why the city has not opened up the possibility to other organizations and service providers instead of putting all of your eggs in this basket that seems to me like they really benefit from keeping people unsheltered. That's a problem. There's a seventy-eight-year-old woman whom my councilwoman knows I've been trying to help for months now, since March, when I found her on the corner of Jefferson and 12th Avenue, who's still in shelter. Community Bridges had her in one of their behavioral health facilities and was paid over $20,000 for the less than two months that she was there. This is a broken system. Please stop throwing money at this organization that isn't really helping people who need to be helped. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pastor and then Hodge, Washington?
Thank you. Is it possible to have someone from OHS come to the table? We'll start off a little bit about, let's talk a little bit about the measures of accountability that we use for our service providers. This is a question and a concern I've raised before, and I think it might be helpful for us to articulate what is currently being done and what is in the pipeline to ensure greater accountability. It is no secret that our budget does provide a lot of resources for our unsheltered population, but we want to make sure that we are spending money in a manner that allows for our residents, both sheltered and unsheltered, to get the maximum benefits. So we can talk a little bit of accountability, please.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Councilwoman Hodge, Washington, thank you for that question. Yes, due to concerns brought to OHS from City Council, we have initialized, or we've initiated additional measures of accountability in addition to what we currently have in place in the Office of Homeless Solutions. So first, currently in place in the Office of Homeless Solutions, we operate all of our shelter contracts on a reimbursement basis. So we are receiving reports on a monthly basis, along with reimbursement requests for those reports as far as expenses. We analyze those monthly. We also, in our Human Services Department, we do an annual fiscal review of every organization that we have a contract with, but due to the concerns that have been brought by the council, the city auditor is also initiating a full audit of some of our organizations, including Community Bridges.
So, thank you. That, to me, those touches, they touch more on the fiscal component of this. I really want to hear a little bit more about our plan to ensure the competency component of this, to make sure that the services that are being contracted for are provided in a manner that benefits those that are affected.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hodge, Washington, thank you for that question. Yes, we, in addition to the reports that we're getting sort of an aggregate of what's happening at every shelter, we also investigate certainly any issues with specific clients or anything that's happening on the ground. I will speak specifically to the Rio Fresco Shelter, the one that we are considering requesting authorization for today. That shelter is our only non-congregate shelter that we have in our system right now for single adults. It has one hundred and seventeen units of non-congregate shelter and has our highest positive exit rate, so the highest number of people exiting that shelter to housing of any other of our single adult shelters in our, in our system currently.
So you bring up the highest positive exit rate. Are we tracking data to see if someone exited from our shelter? Are we checking to confirm that they may exit our shelter, but where are they three months later, six months later, nine months later, one year later, to see if whether or not the provision of services is actually held?
Councilwoman Hodge, Washington, so we're able to continue to monitor where they are if they're still in the homeless service system. So if they're still in a housing development that is within HMIS, we can certainly still monitor to see if they're still in that housing solution. If they've exited the homeless service system to their own housing, not a part of our system, we no longer can necessarily monitor them unless, of course, they re-enter the homeless service system. So if they re-enter homelessness, yes, that is how we would be able to monitor returns to homelessness.
And are we taking that data to determine whether or not the service provider's efficiency or effectiveness is taken into consideration? I know every individual is case-specific, but are we looking to see whether or not there are certain providers that are more efficient or effective in their placement of individuals, and are we seeing more long-term success?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hodge, Washington, yes, that is a vital data point in our, in every contract that we have, specifically in shelter contracts where we're working to house some, some high acuity individuals.
And have we determined what is the benchmark for a good service provider that we can articulate to say, this is what we expect to see? Is there a certain percentage? What is the best practice that you're looking for?
Councilwoman Hodge, Washington, we do have that data. It is on a regional basis at our continuum of care. I don't have that benchmark with me today, but I can follow up with you on that.
I think that's helpful, and I also think the comment that was raised regarding providing other organizations the opportunity to provide service, it's no secret I voiced that concern from the days before. I do believe that we have used the qualified vendor list, and I, and I shared the sentiment that we should have done a more robust outreach and potential vendor solicitation when it came for the Heat Relief Center, and I continue to believe that for other housing options as well. So I would reiterate, what is our plan and what is the process for additional vendors being able to provide those services?
Sure. Mayor and members of council, we definitely heard your concerns as it pertains to the qualified vendor list. So although this contract is, is not off of the qualified vendor list, but just to answer that question, we're doing two things. Anything really within the city's purview, so our projects that we own, the Safe Outdoor Space, Washington Shelter, Phoenix Navigation Center, all of our Heat Relief and our Community Court, we're committed to, six months prior to the ending of any of those contracts, we are going to resolicit for the providers of those contracts. So put it back out to our vendors to see if there is a more competitive proposal within, within our vendors.
And when do we plan on resoliciting?
So all of those contracts sort of have different, different dates, so six months out prior to the end of any of those contracts. So for example, the Safe Outdoor Space, that contract would end June 30th, 2025, so we would begin that process January of 2025, or excuse me, June 30th, 2026. So we'd begin the solicitation process January 2026.
And going back a little bit to the accountability for our service providers, how are we ensuring that they are properly staffed for the residents that they're seeking to serve, as well as ensuring that they are actively, they have a manageable caseload and are meeting deadlines or kind of best practices of when they should be moving from one means to another means in that case management process?
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hodge, Washington, that would be something that we would discover in an audit situation. So we do outline case management ratios in our contracts. We would be checking on those in our onsite monitorings of their programmatic operation. And then, I'm so sorry, can you repeat your question? I think it was a two.
So it was about making sure that they are adequately staffed, as well as have case management or caseload guidelines?
Sure, thank you.
That they are meeting those.
So when we receive their monthly invoices and reports every month, we know exactly how many staff that we're paying for. We get updated reports on case management, and then I'll let Scott maybe talk about the specifics onsite as far as how we're managing staff loads.
Thank you, Rachel. Councilwoman Hodge, Washington, Mayor, members of the council, yeah, one of the tasks of the creation of the Office of Homeless Solutions was to oversee our contracts more efficiently than we had in the past. We have one of our staff members who actually is onsite multiple days a week at each one of these locations to monitor the intake process, the environment that the folks are living in, the caseloads, and then we also do case conferencing at each one of our shelters. That then determines when someone needs more attention, or when someone can be moved to the next phase, or other parts of case management. So we actively monitor that. During that process, we're also assessing caseloads, who's working with who, and if we need to increase that capacity, but that's usually where we monitor if they have the proper staffing that's needed.
And how often is that monitoring done?
Weekly. We're onsite at most of our shelters with Washington, SOS, PNC, every week.
Thank you. And I know my questions varied a little bit off, so thank you, Mayor, for allowing me in the indulgence of going off of this specific contract, but I think it is important to talk about the entire ecosystem as a whole, because as we know, we are nearing the close of, or the sunset of some of our federal funding, and we have to, for me, it's important to ensure that we are making decisions that are actually fiscally sound and sustainable, and not necessarily because it is not city money, it's other funds that we're not as prudent as stewards as we can be for that. So thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity. Thank you both, Scott and Rachel, for answering my questions.
Thank you, thank you. Councilwoman Pastor is next.
Yes. I think I've, there's plenty of times that I have vocalized regarding who is serving our unsheltered population, and I had a, was very direct with staff at the fact that I would possibly vote no for this whole contract, just because there are issues with the system. I also voted, not voted, I also spoke with CBI yesterday and said, told them my concerns, and they have concerns themselves. They have concerns as to what the story is being said, how it's being said, and what services they truly provide, and how people move within the system, and it's not necessarily So my request is that there is a, and the system is complicated, but there is, I want to understand a touch point when a person enters, where possibilities they would go, and at what point is CBI responsible for them, and then if they move into another system, who is responsible for them, and then they move into another system, and who then picks them up, and in all these pieces, ultimately, how do we know where they are? And if they're getting the services that they're getting, and they're being provided what they, their needs are? Stacy talked about a, actually, there's two cases that are in front of me, and I got confused even throughout the whole process, because at one point I was told it wasn't CBI's responsibility, she went into another system. So the pure tracking of a person is complicated and difficult. I also understand is the HMS is not at the level that it should be, and we have been discussing this for years of the lack of, the lack of ability that HMS has also with the other system that we work with. So what I challenged CBI yesterday and said, okay, I get it, I understand it, then how do we fix it? Because it needs to get fixed, because we're not able to do what we need to do, and we're losing people in this system. So I, I just don't want an audit, a financial audit, I want an audit on the system of what we created, and how it is, how people move through a system that is created, and it's not just us, because we work with other, other partners. So it's going to be a very broader audit, and seeing if it's working or not working, and if it's not working, what do we need to do to fix it? And those were the dynamics of conversations that I had with CBI yesterday, because they are just as frustrated, and it's, and it's very challenging. I don't know what the response is.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Pastor, it sounds like you're looking for sort of a system mapping of our current system and how those systems interact, perhaps, and I think we don't have it right, right now in front of us, but we can, we can work on it certainly.
Well, thank you. I don't want it to be for us, I want it to be for the public. And I want it to be for the public because there are navigators or advocates in this process. The other piece is an ROI, when an advocate needs to sign a paperwork to be able to then be their advocate, and one system says, you need this one paperwork, the Medicaid, Medicare, other system, what other system, they're going to need another document to say that they can be an advocate. What I also requested and asked CBI is how do we go about creating one document that checks off all the boxes to say this is the one advocate, so that they don't have to keep bouncing to system to system to system, to try to get the ROI, or the, the release, the permission to advocate for them, because that's another way they get lost in the system. When a person can't get their prescriptions or their meds, and there is no coordination, we have a problem. This is life and death at this situation. And I understand that we can't, there is security pieces or confidentiality pieces where I, as a councilwoman, can't know certain things or are able to do certain, have the ability to know what's happening, but someone should have the ability to do it. Someone should be able to say they're in a safe place, they received their meds, this is what we know. So sometimes I think the system is hiding behind their own, they're, they're hurting themselves by their own policies and procedures, and I would say, get a legal person into, the legal involved, so what can and can you not do? And if anything, let's lead. If we're, if we're in it, so let's start leading, and, and make it so that it's, it works. I'm just very frustrated. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm actually really encouraged by the conversations we're having and the questions being asked around the systemic issues around homelessness. You know, we've had multiple deep dive conversations on this issue now, and I think it's really important for the public here and for the public watching that we need to have these conversations, right? These are tough conversations we have to have, it's tough questions that my colleagues and my councilmembers are asking, that we do need to have that, and be very transparent with the investment that we're making into these contracts for, for them to provide these services and help us face these issues. But I also want and hope that the public starts to really understand that homelessness is a symptom, right? So we can, I fully support addressing the issues, asking the questions, looking at the providers that we're using, but this ties to exactly why I vote the way I vote on the budget, because we're still not getting to the root cause of what is causing homelessness. Without creating more shelter, without creating more housing, without creating, at the center of it is poverty, right? We just had this conversation. To me, if we're really going to be serious about solving homelessness, we have to be invested into solving, solving poverty. Otherwise, we're going to continue to look for qualified vendors, but we're going to run into these issues. So I'm really encouraged by the conversations, like I said, and, you know, we have an open door, please look to the D7 office. Like, we want to help think of the solutions that are truly going to result in the best solutions for our community members that are impacted and face, and, you know, dealing with homelessness, because we have working individuals in some of our shelters, right? We have folks that go to work every day that simply cannot afford rent or a place to live. And so when we look at the systemic pieces of what is failing our people, we have to look at that. So let's continue to have the conversations, and I, it sounds like a few members on the council are ready to roll up our sleeves and really get to work on the tough issues, so thank you.
Thank you. I have had the chance to go out with CBI on numerous occasions and have seen some really successful outcomes. Before I was mayor, there was a woman who worked in the same office, like little mall complex where I was, who had gotten help from CBI, and she's actually now a city employee. So like, when there were really tough point, got help through CBI and is a success story. Last month, I gave a speech where I mentioned a couple, Ralph and Crystal. They had gotten help with the CBI navigation system, going from homelessness to a successful outcome, and so we do have some great success stories. If the public is going to keep supporting us, making larger and larger investments, and this council has made much larger investments in homelessness than our predecessors, we also do need to share those success stories, and I feel privileged because I get to see them, and I hope more people get to as well, because it's life-changing work that we do. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Hodge, Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
I would like to explain my vote.
Please do.
I will be voting yes for this, because I do not want to discontinue services, but I want to be able to dig in and start solving, and come with solutions, and it may not be, we may not be able to assist the masses, but those that we can assist, we assist with quality. So it's a yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item fifty-six is the qualified vendor list. Vice Mayor.
I move to approve.
We have motion of second. Stacy Champion.
Thank you for asking questions that has been a sorely needed thing. So, and just on a side note, one of the things you all should look at doing is pulling data on evictions tied to housing vouchers. Somebody please write that down. I think you would see that there are a lot of people who end up falling through the cracks after they get touted as a success story. But so to this, I just wanted to address, here we are with another, another chunk of money to Community Bridges, almost $200 million in a couple of years for Community Court, and I would just say, if you all would just stop criminalizing people being poor, then people wouldn't have to go to court. I think we could house a lot of people with that money or get them necessary services. I'm already seeing people being moved out of shade, and people are regularly trespassed for just trying to stay cool. I see it every day when I'm driving around and when I stop to help people. So again, as our councilwoman Hernandez stated, you're not addressing the root cause. This council and this city has, for a long time, been extremely reactive versus proactive, and this is another thing, if you stop criminalizing people for existing, you wouldn't need to spend $2 million to help them with Community Court. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Mayor, may I explain my vote?
Please do.
Thank you. Just in like the previous item, I think it's important to continue services, continue the list while we work on narrowing down and building a better accountability model, so I vote yes for today to support it while we continue to work on this issue.
Hodge, Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item 63 is the expansion of Phoenix Forge in partnership with the Maricopa County Community College District, Vice Mayor.
I move to approve item 63.
Second.
We have motion of second, noting that Councilwoman Pastor will not be participating in this vote. This is a very exciting investment, a really dynamic facility that helps our entrepreneurs as well as our hobbyists or people who just want to explore a potential new talent. It has some great facilities that our residents can use and can also help people going into new career paths. There's CNC machining, which is an area where we have a lot of growing job opportunities here. So very excited to support this partnership and I'm thankful to the Community College for making this investment in downtown Phoenix. It's in District 7. Do you want to say anything?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. I've actually had the privilege to tour the facility a while back, and it's a really amazing facility. I think it has a lot of good use, not just for our students, but also our overall community. So I'm really excited to see the expansion of this and continue the partnership with them. So I'm really excited to see this on the agenda.
Wonderful. Roll call.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark? Waring? O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
All right. Item 70 is FEMA-related partnership with pharmaceutical cachet and Valleywise Health, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I move to approve item 70.
Second.
We have motion of second. Leonard Clark, come on down.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Leonard Clark. I was born here in Phoenix. I don't live in Phoenix right now, but I'm always like trying to keep an eye on what's going on. I hope you'll vote yes for this because as we all know right now, we're concerned about FEMA's response and what's going on, you know, being that our FEMA head didn't seem to know what, that we have a hurricane season. So I'm just concerned because I'm hoping you'll do more work on emergency preparedness for the city of Phoenix, being that it's the fifth largest city in the United States of America. So maybe we'll have to take more of this on, I guess, because the individual in the White House is trying to put it off on the governors to respond. So I think that politics is being played with FEMA. And because of that, people like Phoenix, the city of Phoenix, our citizens will be punished because we support a constitutional republic. So anyways, I hope that you will vote yes on this for the limited time that supplies last for FEMA because it is being cut back. Valuable experts are being taken away because apparently some people think that it's not important anymore. Pull yourself up by your bootstraps, you know, like Huber, Herbert Hoover said, pull yourself up by your bootstraps and we'll all just come out of this better. We don't need the evil government, the federal government. Thank you.
Thank you. This important support for Arizona Task Force One, which, through which our fire department has gone to so many of the most difficult moments for our country. So good to move forth that, but I think like Leonard, I was surprised to learn the head of FEMA did not know we had a hurricane season. Roll call.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark? Waring? O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item 74 is an agreement with the Arizona Department of Health Services. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve. I move to approve item 74.
We have a motion and a second. Councilwoman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. We have continuously heard that Phoenix PD has stretched beyond capacity at the same time that the department continues to go over budget on their overtime. And the corrective action to this should not be to expand the department duties, but to reduce and realign them. Additionally, continuing to involve Phoenix police and enforcement of issues raised at the state level is the same slippery slope we see with the department's involvement in federal immigration enforcement. We must reduce, stretching our police department to do the political whims of other administrations as this is not, that's not their role. I am also against involving our department in this enforcement because we already know from the data that black and brown residents are disproportionately targeted, arrested, and incarcerated for marijuana-related offenses. And this disturbing pattern will continue under this contract. Finally, I firmly believe that state agencies like DPS should use their capacities to enforce state-level initiatives like this instead of spending their time and troopers randomly running license plates in downtown Phoenix and booking our people and putting them into a path to family separations. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hernandez?
No.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark? Waring? O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight one.
Item 82 is approval to enter into agreements with various school districts for funding of SROs, Vice Mayor.
I move to approve item 82.
We have motion of second, noting Councilman Waring will not be participating in this vote, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to take an opportunity to share an example of bipartisanship that will help protect our students and support school safety. In Phoenix, we have more requests for school resource officers than we can accommodate, and that's why I worked to find a solution. Our retired police officers are incredible assets. Their passion for public service doesn't end in retirement. I immediately researched how we could allow them to return to work as school resource officers without losing their pension or creating an unfunded liability for the city. I found partnership with State Senator David Gowan, a Republican who sponsored SB 1287, and his colleagues who supported it along with Governor Katie Hobbs, a Democrat who signed the bill into law. By asking a simple question, how can we get our most experienced officers in schools? And by working with the legislature, I'm thrilled to announce that Phoenix can welcome back retired police officers who want to serve as school resource officers. SROs differ from school safety officers because resource officers are generally assigned full-time to one school for the entire year so they can develop relationships and build trust. An officer's presence and interactions can be life-changing and life-saving. For example, when a student shared that they were being abused at home with the Phoenix Police Department SRO, the officer was able to intervene and get the student help. I can't thank our state leaders and our police officers enough for recognizing the need and stepping up to find a solution. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I have someone explain the, can I have someone come to the table to explain? I don't know if Lori, if you're okay. Just explain it how the assignment of SROs are allocated. Is it, explaining that it's prompted or initiated by each district.
You know, Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, essentially it is by district request. So we do get requests from districts. We get more requests than we are able to fulfill, but we fulfill as many as we can. The remainder are often filled with SSOs, as Vice Mayor O'Brien just mentioned, but not even all of those requests can be filled. And so the bill that was just mentioned will help to significantly improve, we believe, our ability to fill those positions.
And thank you for offering that explanation. I wanted it because there was some misconception about how the determination of SROs are made. It's not made on a city level, it's made each by each district. And the reason I wanted to highlight that because I have seen in districts in both, in my, sorry, school districts, within my district, I've seen those that do not want SROs, I see those that wanted SROs. And I just wanted to point out of how important, in some cases, SROs have been. A few weeks ago in Levine, a student brought a loaded handgun onto campus. And thanks to a teacher's quick response and the immediate response from the school's SRO, the situation was resolved quickly without even facilitating a lockdown. So although there is some concerns about having more SROs, I do believe that we don't want to be in a situation where we have a mass school shooting and we don't have the resources. So I do believe this is the type of readiness and partnerships that help to make our schools safer, if that is the direction the school districts want to go. So I appreciate, I believe it is our responsibility to have the SRO available if the school district wants them. And I believe it's about having a presence if needed and about effective, community-minded working with them in furthering the needs of our students, our schools, and our families. So I am supportive of this initiative if it grants us the opportunities as requested by the school district. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes. I have heard that some of the challenges with the SSOs is that, is that it's not consistent and that people come in or coming in and coming out of the school district of the schools. And it's one of their challenges because they want consistency and they want, very similar to the SROs, that the SSOs are assigned to that particular school. So I don't know how you fix that. I don't know how you work with the school districts on that, but that is one of the challenges that they are having. And so they're just, they're not sure about the SSO concept or model.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Pastor, thank you for that comment. And you're correct, we have heard the same frustration from many of the school districts who would prefer to have an SRO, which is the full-time, consistent police officer on their campus versus the SSO, which is actually an off-duty officer who is being assigned on a daily basis. It's kind of like a substitute teacher, that would be the best analogy I can come up with. To provide that example, you may have, you know, four different SSOs in a given week. There is also the possibility that the SSO may come from a different jurisdiction other than Phoenix in a Phoenix school. And the challenge that we have is that the SSO program is not something that we operate. Our officers do participate in it, but it is an off-duty program. It is not a Phoenix Police Department program. It is actually operated under the Arizona Department of Education, and they use a vendor called Off Duty Management to manage that program.
And I understand that, but we're also the largest city to say some of the work with ADE to say, here are some of our challenges. How can we work together? I think that's one of the dynamics.
Vice Mayor.
I think that this new legislation provides us that opportunity because now we can, our retired police officers have an exemption to come back. So we could go out and solicit to those retired officers and say, would you like to come back? So we, that was, all of those concerns, Councilwoman Pastor, are the reason we pursued this legislation. Absolutely.
Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, do we do have, do we have speaker? Leonard Clark.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. And I know of the great concern about mass shooting. First of all, I'm here to say that, you know, people want to lump us into two sides. Either you love the police and you worship the police, or you hate and you loathe the police. It's much like Romeo and Juliet. You can't be in the middle and just say, how about we have somebody who follows their oaths and, you know, follows the law. I understand that, you know? But due to the concerns that I and many people have in this, you know, also in the city of Phoenix for the fact that, you know, some of our councilmembers, and I thank you for your comments, are bringing up that Republican members of the state legislature have introduced this legislation. My problem is right now, because we do have a lawless, unconstitutional government at the very top that does not believe in habeas corpus or due process and is violating the Constitution, the head of the fish, so to speak, is now rotting the rest of the fish if we let it. So I guess to cut things short here, what I'm trying to say is, the police right now, you know, today NBC News just came out and is saying that federal and law enforcement is being reshaped as we speak. So my concerns are, although I know we have some agreements worked out, ICE is now going around our city and around other cities around the country, operating as the king's men. They're not following their constitutional oaths. They're covering their faces. And I know they say they have death threats, but we must know who our accusers are. So now we're saying that we should allow these officers in, even though, again, the individual in the White House who seeks to be a king and his monarchist supporters, you know, are telling us schools are now open to immigration and ICE enforcement. So as long as there is lawlessness, there is unconstitutional lawlessness at the top. Our Attorney General and the advisor to the President seek to suspend the constitutional right, then we should not. I cannot be for this. Change my support to not. I'm not for this. I was neutral, but we cannot do this right now. We have a problem in this country. The Constitution is not being followed. The conservatives, if you truly believe in law and order, stop being monarchists and be actual Lincoln Republicans. So we can't have these officers right now until the Constitution is enforced. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hernandez?
May I explain my vote?
Please do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I cannot support any proposal to spend city money placing school resource officers on school campuses. We should not be policing children for being children without addressing the underlying issue of why certain behaviors happen. Based on conversations with school board members I have had, there is yet to be proven evidence of SROs making schools safer, and this also contributes to the school-to-prison pipeline. As a city, we should invest in our youth by advocating for more counselors to be on campus, expanding after-school programs, making sure that all students have access to free and healthy meals, and ensuring that they have the family support they need to thrive in their education. I vote no.
Hodge Washington?
I'm going to explain my vote, Mayor.
Please do.
I continue to believe that teachers should not be the one dealing with firearms in a classroom. I do not believe it is in the best interest of children to not have someone who can justify, who can deal with a firearm in the classroom. So I will vote yes because I believe in the student's safety.
Pastor?
Yes. The three schools that have asked for SSOs are Cartwright and Power College Prep and Phoenix Union. These schools have asked for these. And I'm thinking about what Leonard Clark said, but I'm also thinking about just safety in general. And just safety in general of a school system, as I sat on the larger school system, and understanding the nuances of a large system with over one school, over 3,000 students and teachers, and understanding if a gun is on campus, what needs to happen and how it's coordinated. And it has happened. And SROs are really, what SROs do on campus and SSOs do on campus is really trying to delay any more tragedy that will happen on the campus. So my vote is yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
I'd like to explain my vote too. I, unfortunately, when my son was going to elementary school, there was a coach that molested several boys that were in the fifth and sixth grade. And I sure wish they would have had a school resource officer could recognize that there was a predator amongst these children that were just so sadly affected by this. So there is a purpose. Yes, there are some problems, but there is a purpose. And I sure wish that we had had that in that school when my son was going there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes seven one.
Item 84 is NVLS Learn Database Subscription Service, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I move to approve item 84.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do you have comments?
I have two questions.
Great. Councilwoman Hernandez.
Not sure who, Lori, if you would answer these questions. I just have two questions on this.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilwomen, we will have Chief Orinder and Assistant Chief Bradley come down to talk about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Orinder, for joining us on the, up here. My first question, can you explain a little bit about the technology that this contract would use and how, I guess, that one, sorry. It's been a long day. Could you explain the technology and what the two mil- Can you explain the technology and what the $2 million on this contract will be used for?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Hernandez and members of the council. So, a little bit of background context on this system. It is actually, for us, it's described as the National Vehicle Location Service. And it's the law enforcement archival and reporting network. And this is actually owned by Vigilant is the name of the company. So, what this system does is it really serves as a point-in-time data aggregate where whenever a vehicle happens to be captured in a given area at a given time and the plate is captured, it is actually, that information is uploaded into the system. The system that we use is a cloud-based storage system. It's CEGIS and SOC 3 compliant. And what that means is that it's criminal justice information. So, that, that information and data is secured within that environment. And what that allows us to do is if we have investigators that are working a case, we all know the mobility of the criminal nature going from one city across a border into another. What this does is that if we have an agency or even our own agency where we're looking to place a vehicle at a certain time with respect to a particular investigation, it gives us another tool to be able to conduct that enhanced level of investigatory follow-up.
Thank you for that. And then my next question, and the reason I'm going to ask this next question is because just yesterday, there is reporting that came out, not here in Arizona, but in other states, where now ICE is using software like this to conduct searches on, searches from local police departments on license plates. So, my question is, do we know if this vendor allows or would allow access to ICE for immigration-related searches on the license plates that our department scans? So that that will continue to assist the current administration with our targeting of immigrant communities of color?
Thank you for the question, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Hernandez and members of the council. So, the data that is collected by us, again, is uploaded into our system. And we field, if we field a query or a request for information from another jurisdiction, as long as it's, as long as they're part of a criminal justice information-approved entity or an agency, then we would be able to provide that data. Now, with regard to the data that's being provided, as I mentioned earlier, it's just a single pointer system that tells us on this given time, this is where the car was. It does not provide registration and ownership information of the vehicle. That is a function of motor vehicle. And so, an agency requesting that would have other, other means of being able to obtain that without going through a request for our data. The one connectivity that we do have through the NVLS system is that it is linked nationally to the NCIC, or National Criminal Information Center. And what that enables the system to do is that if a plate is captured, they can check to see if that is actually a current outstanding stolen vehicle on a national level as a felony crime. So, that would be the only data that is readily available when somebody else makes a request of our data.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that response. I think my concern still exists that we are seeing ICE try to use unprecedented avenues to try to gain access to our residents' legal status. And so, just anything that could enable that or somehow they could find that, obviously, I'm going to have a lot of concerns around that. So, I just appreciate you responding to those questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hodge, Washington.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I acknowledge that this is a tool and a toolkit that could help with our under, our shortage in officers. I also have some concerns based on media reports I have seen, not necessarily here in the city of Phoenix, but I've seen other areas where one officer used the license plate reader to track, I think he used, was it 83,000 cameras he tracked to track down an individual that had an abortion. And I guess I want to ensure what protocols are being set up to ensure the privacy of our Phoenix residents when this data is captured.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hodge, Washington, that's actually a great question. And I think within our system, because the data that is provided is somewhat limited, only to a vehicle in a location, there would be other systems within each respective agency if there was improper use of the data that was collected or improper dissemination of the data that was collected. I know, speaking on behalf of the city of Phoenix, we have our own internal protocols and policies against using it for other means. If it's not criminal justice-related and it's not in furtherance of a criminal investigation, then we would take a look at that and there would be potential discipline that could be metered out as a result based on our findings.
And along that line, what are the audit mechanisms to ensure that, to prevent such misuse? I mean, it's one thing to have a policy in place, but how would we ensure that this policy is not being violated? What would be the, and not unauthorized access to this information by an officer? Is there some procedure that we are planning?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hodge, Washington, currently, the way the system is utilized, as I understand it to be, that when the request comes through, it is very limited in what we would provide just to the data sets that I've previously mentioned. In terms of what, what other activity somebody is going to use that information for, our inquiry of that data would be limited to, number one, verifying that the requesting agency is a CEGIS-compliant credible agency. And then, again, the data that we give would only be limited to those segments of information. What they do with that data after that, that would be, that would fall back under the jurisdiction of the requesting agency.
And how long is the data stored? How long is the license plate data stored for?
At this time, I believe that data is stored for up to 90 days.
Up to 90 days. I would recommend that there, and if we, if this passes, that there be some, some protocol that outlines for unfettered access to this information, that we streamline the use of this data and we streamline, that there's some checks and balances to ensure that it's not just based on what we, our best presumption, that it's actually based on making sure that we are not misusing this information. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Chief, noting that you have been in your role for a very short amount of time. Many of our databases have lists where we know who queried them and for what purpose. For this database, do we know what, what were the search parameters and who made the search?
Madam Mayor, members of the subcommittee, I can verify exactly what the checklist protocols are when a, when a request comes through, and I'm certainly happy to provide that. My understanding of the system is that once that request is made, and again, we verify that who the requesting entity is, we know what the data is that's being given out. We know when the request was made because it is timestamped within our system. So, if we had to go back and do follow-up later, because this is a research database, that's really the meat and potatoes of what the system does, is to be able to allow us to go back and pull information out. We would have the ability to at least research the date, time that that information was accessed and to whom it was provided.
Wonderful. And is there an ent, a bureau or a person who is responsible for doing spot checks to make sure we are using this database appropriately?
Madam Mayor, members of the subcommittee, currently, right now, the system, the crux of the system is actually housed within our Arizona Counterterrorism Information Center. So, we actually partner with multiple agencies there, of which Phoenix is one of the participating agencies. We also utilize our Threat Liaison Officer Program. And they would have, as investigative officers, they would field some of those requests, as would other research analysts at the Arizona Counterterrorism Information Center, or the ACTIC, if you will. So, those requests could be received by somebody other than an analyst from Phoenix PD because it goes into the statewide Fusion Center.
Different question than what I meant to ask. Is someone doing spot checks to occasionally make sure that the queries are appropriate? So, that no one's querying for their ex-wife?
No, I understand your question. I don't have an answer for you right now on that. I can certainly check into that and get back to you.
For when does this expire? And if we wanted to do a continuance, how, how much would that?
Mayor.
Councilwoman, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to continue this.
June 18th?
Yeah, I would, I need more clarity of this.
And Mayor, members of the council, just for clarification. So, this item is actually a contract that is already in place through June 18th of 2029. What this approval is doing is actually approving the change of entity name to Motorola from Vigilant Solutions. Or, I'm sorry, reverse that.
Yeah.
No, was that right? Okay, it's a name change on the contract. So, it's not actually approval of the contract itself, it's approval of the name change on the contract. The contract itself was approved.
Vice Mayor.
Previously.
So, what happens if we don't approve a name change?
Don't get paid.
Sorry, I can't see Derek's face.
What happens if you don't approve the name change is that you don't have a valid contract because the legal entity is the new name.
So, so it is necessary to proceed with the name change, to have a legal contract?
Right.
And then, my follow-up question is, Derek, can we extend to June 18th without there being any unintended consequences or negative consequences to the police department and the city of Phoenix?
I believe you can. You can extend for a short period of time.
Okay. And I'm sorry, did the councilwoman make a motion?
I did make a motion. I would like to continue this item.
To the 18th?
June 18th. I'll second.
With motion and a second. Councilwoman, did you want to comment on the continue? Councilwoman Hodge, Washington.
Thank you. I was going to ask if we, ask my colleague if she could add to her motion, not just a continuation, but a direction to provide some kind of guidelines to ensure that we have an audit function in this as well, so ensure that it's not improperly used and we have some mechanism of checking that.
I accept that motion. I accept that language in the motion.
Is that a?
I think we will definitely do that, whether we can do it as part of changing the contract name. We shall employ a lawyer.
However it goes, how I'm looking at it is by June 18th, there needs to be some clarity on the checks and balances of it.
Question, Mayor. Vice Mayor.
So, we can continue it till June 18th, but it could be, would it be a policy directive that the police department develop procedures for auditing it or ensuring that it's being used for proper use? I'm not sure who to look at at the table. I'm not going to.
Mayor, members of the council, Vice Mayor, yes, we could have the police department do that. And we can also request that our internal auditor add this to their audit plan to conduct an audit and ensure proper use of the system per existing policies and procedures. Because there are existing ops orders that govern using databases for appropriate reasons.
And then I would ask, given the friendly amendment to Councilwoman Pastor's motion, is it possible for that to be in place by June 18th? Or is more time needed in order to get that done?
I believe that's sufficient time.
And it sounds like they could already be in place. But I think it's valuable to have this conversation so that we know.
Right, so then I, my second also accepts the friendly amendment. I was just trying to verify how we do it properly, that's all.
And Lee goes fine with this?
Yes.
Okay. We should.
Okay.
Mayor, yeah.
Councilwoman.
I was just going to ask for clarity. So, we're going to vote on the mo, the substitute motion to continue.
And normally, if it was a continuance, we'd just do a voice vote. But because this is a substantive, we are going to do a roll call. So, it is to continue and to have audit protocols which are provided.
All of it, you heard it.
Do you want to repeat what you're con?
I want to ensure that there is a protocol that, there's an audit protocol to ensure the proper usage of the license plate reader data.
Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Hodge, Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark. Waring. O'Brien.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine, zero.
Item 85 is a request to increase meter rates for taxicab services at Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport. Will the city clerk read the title?
Item 85 is for ordinance G-7393 and ordinance amending Phoenix City Code, Chapter 4, Article 4, Section 4-83 by changing established fare rates for taxicabs departing from Phoenix Sky Harbor International Airport.
Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I move to approve item 85.
We have motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Hodge, Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark. Waring. O'Brien.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine, zero.
Item 93 is Airport Childcare Provider Award Recommendation. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I move to approve item 93.
We have motion and a second. This is a real passion project for Councilwoman Guardado. I'll turn to her.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment to emphasize the critical role that Phoenix Sky Harbor International Airport plays in our economy with an annual impact exceeding $44 billion. This airport is not just a transportation hub. It is a vital part of our city's infrastructure that relies heavily on the unwavering dedication of the workers who keep it operational day in and day out. It is why during the pandemic, I knew it was imperative that we provide childcare support to the 47,000-plus essential workers at Sky Harbor Airport who serve over 121,000 passengers and manage 1,077 aircraft daily. I am grateful to Mayor Gallego for her partnership and support during the pandemic to ensure the impactful program could become a reality. As moms, we understand how important it is to have quality childcare for our children. Investing in childcare solutions for these employees will yield benefits, not only for the airport, but also for our entire community. With the rising cost of living, parents deserve peace of mind knowing their children are in a safe and nurturing environment they can afford while they're at work. The development of a new childcare facility combined with existing scholarships for airport workers will be transformative. This initiative will be instrumental in attracting and retaining the talent necessary to maintain the growth of our world-class airport. I would like to extend my gratitude to Deputy City Manager Mariupanawawa, Director of Aviation Services Chad McCosky, Matt Hale, and the entire staff at the Aviation Department for their commitment to supporting both the workers at Sky Harbor and their families. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for your leadership on this. For me, this came during the pandemic when we were all having challenges with, with workforce and childcare. It was, it is hard to find, frankly, period, it is hard to find child, quality childcare, but particularly if you work a non-traditional schedule. Sky Harbor is a 24/7 entity, and we want people with families to be able to work there and not have to make as many trade-offs with parenting. So, we're hopeful this will help with that. Also, I'm so thankful to our partners on this, including First Things First, that, who have helped us with scholarships and with thinking about this program. But a passion project, definitely, and one, we've actually, under the, a previous secretary of transportation was really excited about what we were doing here and what it would mean for helping airports get the workforce they need. As we have seen in the news, there is, there is a need for people to go into the airport workforce. Anyone want to, Councilwoman Hodge, Washington?
Thank you, Mayor. I too wanted to echo the sentiment. I think this is a very important step for our working families, especially those that work at the airport. There are very few childcare options near the airport. And this new facility, made possible by ARPA funds, will make it work, make it easier for our workers to take care of their children while keeping our, our airport running smoothly. I am very proud that Phoenix is leading in this space. Only a handful of airports offer onsite childcare. And this sends a clear message that we value our workforce and want to keep them where they are. I too would like to say thank you to everyone involved who helped to move this forward. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes, I think this is a win-win all the way around for Phoenix, but also for the workers and the employees, and also for those that have businesses there so that their employees could be present and not worried about their family or not saying, I have to get off at this, this time, I have to pick up my child. And it was a labor of love, I would say that, in a time of crisis, that this, this, we were able to do this. So, I want to thank Councilwoman Guardado for her leadership on making it happen and Councilwoman Hodge, Washington's on finishing it off with, along with Councilwoman Guardado. So, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. We'll now go to public comment unless anyone else. Councilwoman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I, as someone that is new to the council, it's just really great to see that we're delivering like amazing solutions like this for our workforce at the airport and our workers at the airport. So, it's, these are the type of things that I love to see that we should continue to invest in that will really allow our residents to thrive in our community. So, thank you to Councilwoman Guardado for championing this, along with the mayor and Councilwoman Hodge, Washington, for coming in and dunking it in the end. Thank you.
Wonderful. We will now go to public comment. A reminder A reminder for those who were not here at the beginning of the meeting, the city has a policy, if you are a paid lobbyist, we ask that you disclose it. It's also helpful if you're a business owner, if you share what your business is, and if you're involved with litigation, we ask that you disclose that. All right. We will begin with Teresa Christensen, followed by Josh Graeble.
Hi, my name is Teresa Christensen and I am the founder and owner of Bright Beginnings Preschool and Childcare. I am the other respondent to the RCF for the aviation project and I was subsequently beat out by Kinder Care. And I understand that this is the council's passion project and it was mine as well. I want to make some clarifying points that I do not believe that the RCF pro, or the RCF process was fair and equitable. As a local businesswoman who takes great pride in the 30 years that I have served my community, I do not believe that I was treated fairly by the Department of Aviation's RCF project, or RCF process. And I can go into further detail, however, I wanted to also make a few more comments in regards to the services in which you think that you're getting, you're not getting extended care. I know this from firsthand. My company offered to offer the airport extended care. The RCF recipient is not offering the airport extended care hours. I know that there were other participants that offered 24-hour care models and they were not even considered. This process has cost me over $100,000 to participate in as a small business owner and I was built, or I was beat out by a for-profit conglomerate that puts profitability before care. I understand that this council is trying to be proactive and I applaud your efforts. And I really, really, really want to bring home to the fact that I would like you to take a deeper dive into the process itself for small businesses that tried passionately and pervasively to prevail in a system that wasn't ethical. It wasn't fair and it did my business and any other business no consideration. Sorry.
Thank you. Josh is next, followed by Robert Kersting.
Not a mayor, members of council. I actually think that my client and a couple, I, I'm, my name is Josh Graeble. I'm with Dickinson Wright. I'm an attorney who is involved with litigation with the city. I believe my client and a couple of other people were going to speak. I actually would suggest or would request that I be moved to behind them because I think they would make more passionate or more important points than I would, but I can go if you would like me to.
And your client is not Teresa?
It's not Teresa, no.
Okay. All right. We will come back. We'll go to Robert next, followed by Joe Klute. Did we lose Robert? Robert, it's your, the floor is yours. Robert, we cannot hear you. Bob, Bob Kersting. Last Bob? All right, Joe Klute.
Hi.
Microphone. That way they can, that way your attorney.
Hi, I'm Joe Klute, owner of Small People Preschool, excuse my nervousness, and Phoenix Sky Care. When First Things First advertised this opportunity, I was confident. Not just because of my track record, but because I believe the process would be impartial. I invested thousands hiring an architect, a writer, a project manager to meet every requirement of these RCS. Our scores with the awardee was only 4% difference. When I reviewed their proposal, I was absolutely shocked. Kinder Care completely omitted the required design section. They lied on a sworn affidavit about lawsuits, lease cancellations, and the multiple childcare licenses that were revoked for wrongdoing. And openly wrote in their proposal that they'd submit critical documents only after receiving the award. We did not get that. They changed lease terms declaring that they were not maintaining the playground. They demanded the right to raise tuition for Sky Harbor families after only six months. They didn't even offer the appropriate hours. I offered 24 hours. Sky Harbor does not work on a nine-to-five schedule. Meanwhile, the city encouraged small local providers like me to compete, knowing full well you guys were already backing a non-American-owned, publicly traded company. When protests, appeals, and a special action were filed, Aviation's response was that the RCS requirements were merely suggestions. I thought we had to do what the RCS said. They've operated as if rules don't apply, even allowing the procurement officer to fabricate, fabricate a conversation to get me disqualified from the second round of scoring. The proposer came forward to my attorney. Still, the city is just dismissing me as purely disfrontaled. I have spent $150,000, which should have been a level playing field. They excluded me from scoring because they already knew that they were going to deny my protest before they even read it. They knew they were going to deny my appeal before they even read it. I'm involved in a special action right now. We are still in litigation. When you look at everything that has happened with this RCS, there is only one conclusion. If the goal of this lease is to just protect city officials at all costs, then the legal battle is going to continue. The grassroots movement against Kinder Care and corruption is going to gain traction.
Thank you so much for that testimony. We are gonna, why don't we try Robert or Bob Kersting one more time?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Go ahead.
Oh gosh, finally. I was trying to figure out how this thing works. Oh, yeah, my name's Bob Kersting. I'm a licensed life insurance agent and I happen to be present in Jody Klute's office during the phone call with Kinder Care that I guess the city of Phoenix cited to disqualify her. And I heard the entire conversation and Kinder Care's two-sentence summary is completely false. And I will be testifying that in court and felt it would be necessary to speak up and let you guys know that because it is, it's upsetting that this is happening.
Thank you for that important testimony. I think now we'll go back to Josh Graeble.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate all of the, the passion with which all of the council members spoke about this project. I further appreciate how important it is and I think my client appreciates how important it is. But I think you also just heard from them, there is some passion because there was, or this process was, in my opinion, as someone who has been a procurement lawyer for 27 years, seriously questionable. And there are some serious issues with regard to the process that the procurement undertook. And those issues are before a superior court judge in Maricopa County at this point in time threw a special action complaint that was filed by my client because the procurement issues are so severe. I understand and we recognize fully that there are, that this is, you know, potentially causing a delay. We would suggest, and again, going back and forth is not going to help anything and I've only got a couple of minutes, but all that I can say to the council is this. There are some real issues with regard to the way that this process, this process proceeded, with regard to the veracity or the lack of veracity with regard to what decisions were made by the city. And the only way to actually find that out is to have a hearing and to have a process and to have a legal proceeding in which you get to sort of develop that evidence. That has not happened. There has been an appeal that was decided based strictly on paper. There has been, there has been a procurement process that was just right, it's strictly on paper. But the truth is, and having done this for a number of years, the only way that these things come out and the only way that the real information comes out is through an actual litigated advocated, advocated process. That has not happened in this case. We would therefore strongly recommend to the council that it, at a minimum, delay ruling or deciding this option at least for the next two weeks as there will be a hearing before that judge on June 20th and new information will, or information will be decided there. Thank you for your time.
And Josh, just for the record, your client is?
Is Sky Care, or excuse me, Sky Care Small People Preschool, so Ms. Klute.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay, and then Lynette. Lynette Bowle. Okay, we have no audio for Lynette. All right, then we will go to Carissa.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Carissa Messick and I represent Kinder Care Learning Companies. We're a national provider of childcare services servicing over 195,000 children across the entire economic spectrum. We have 26 centers in the Phoenix MSA already. I actually work with Kinder Care at Work, which is a subset within Kinder Care where we partner with corporations, universities, and municipalities who are looking to do what you're doing, which is to provide childcare for a specific workforce. One noteworthy and recent example of that is the Maricopa County Kids Club, a partnership with Maricopa County to provide childcare to their employees and first responders. That center will open in the next few days and most of those 156 seats are already full. Kinder Care is very excited about the partnership for the Phoenix Sky Harbor Childcare Project. You are one of a small group of airports that have recognized the need for a childcare workforce, for a childcare solution for the airport workforce. This center will be a tremendous asset to the attraction and retention of the 47,000 employees that go to work there every day. I've had three other airports actually reach out to me since this process has started, very aware of what's going on in Phoenix and asking what they can do to do the same thing. Your community is ahead of the curve on addressing this need and it is being watched. I could spend this time speaking to Kinder Care's capabilities to provide high-quality childcare, but I think it's more important that you hear it from your constituents. I took an Uber yesterday afternoon to the 44th Street construction site. I had not seen it before. And the Uber driver, her name's Cassandra, she knew where we were going and was so interested to see how it was being integrated into the area that she got out and looked around with me. She was so impressed with the opportunities it would provide her friends and family who wanted to work at the airport and specifically how excited she was to, quote, "see the major, mayor and the city invest back in it, in the, in us in a way that we really need," unquote. You're doing amazing things for children here in Phoenix and we at Kinder Care are excited to support your efforts on that journey.
Thank you. We're gonna try Lynette Bowle one more time. Lynette, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Now we can hear you.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Um, perfect. I would like to tell you a little bit about myself. I have three childcare centers here in the Phoenix area, as well as I have been in the industry now for over 38 years. But I'm not coming to you as a provider, but I'm coming to you today as a parent. My two stepsons are young and they were enrolled in Kinder Care. And they were supposed to be picked up from one of the Kinder Care buses in school. Matthew was six and Chris was seven. But they convinced the driver that they were going to go home today. They weren't going to go to school, or to Kinder Care. And the driver didn't check. They didn't check the story. And he left. And the boys decided that they would go to the park. And on the way home, they crossed a busy street and Matthew was struck. At that time, my husband was working in the Air Force and he was in Seoul, Korea. And I did an emergency flight for him to get back home so that he could tell his son that why he was brain dead and I kept him alive so he could get home. This has changed so many people's lives forever. Maybe you just start telling yourself that it was a tragic mistake or a fluke, but it's not. I used to work for Kinder Care and I've experienced their operations and how they cut corners and how they hide things.
Thank you, thank you.
Being the biggest and the best is not, the biggest and the best is not the best.
Lynette, thank you for sharing that really important testimony. I know it's very emotional. Appreciate that. Okay, I believe that is our final public comments. We'll go to Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. Chad, I have now a couple of questions for you. You know, I know that you and I have, throughout the years, have talked a lot about the hours and making sure that we are able to provide childcare for majority of our workers at the airport. Can you confirm what are the, what are going to be the hours of operation?
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Guardado. First, if I may, I'd like to introduce those who are with me today. So with me to my right is Shanks Lenhart, who is external counsel representing the city of Phoenix on this matter. And to his right is Matthew Heil, Deputy Aviation Director, who's been spearheading this procurement process. The procurement proposal submitted, as I recall, has beginning proposed hours of operation from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM daily. Those are subject to negotiation though throughout the life of the contract. And if I may, Councilwoman Guardado, I'd like to ask Mr. Heil if he would like to expand on that.
Thank you, Chad and Councilwoman Guardado. Yes, those are the hours that are in the proposal. And additionally, as we had done initial research related to what we wanted to start the facility operating hours for, we, we had heard from other industry providers that the necessity of a full 24-hour operation, especially at the outset, was not very likely, given that many parents were going to want to have their children at home or with a family member during that time. And so that's why, rather than requiring 24 hours at the outset, we took proposals as they were.
And is, did we do any type of surveying with workers at the airport? Because it is a 24-hour facility and then you, you sometimes do have families that do need childcare later, later in the evening. Did we do any type of surveying, you know, for us to find out for ourselves what would be the best thing to do for our, for our workforce?
Councilwoman Guardado, thank you for the question. Yes. We conducted a survey very early in the process before actually this was, was even started. And the survey that we conducted with the, the different organizations, business organizations, got a general result of 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM as the primary window of need.
And is there a reason why we're not asking then for, for, from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM and rather than 6:00 PM?
That was, I believe, simply the starting point of a 12-hour window for operation.
I mean, I would feel more comfortable if we could extend it till 8:00 PM just because of, that's what the survey is saying and that, you know, in a lot of ways makes sense to me. I know that there's a lot of workers at the airport that do leave. You know, we have some workers, depending on flights. I mean, it's not that everyone works all the way till 10, 11:00 PM at night. I, I know there's less people that work those hours, but I would feel more comfortable if we could stipulate that we extend the hours till 8:00 PM just to make sure that we can accommodate everyone. With that being said, my other question is, do we have renderings? Do you guys have renderings of what the playground would look like? What are the accommodations that we're going to be seeing for our children and making sure that it's a safe space?
Thank you for the question, woman, councilwoman. So the renderings that were provided as part of the proposal are primarily layout and space fit, so there's not a specific rendering of the- space fit, so there's not a specific rendering of the childcare, I should say, playground equipment. But we do have renderings of the space and the facility generally.
And then my, my next question is, you know, we, I mean, one of the things that we're seeing more and more in uptake is in children with special needs. Are they gonna be, you know, like, do we have that stipulated, you know, that they will be, um, being able to accommodate children with special needs?
Thank you, councilwoman. Yes, that, that is part of the requirement.
And then my, my last question, I think my last question, is if, if this goes into litigation and, you know, there's a court date for the providers that were not awarded, and the judge decides to say that the City of Phoenix was in wrongdoing, and if we were to approve this today, then what happens?
Councilwoman, I would defer to our council on that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, councilmen, I think the issue is set, as Mr. Gribel said, for a hearing on June 20th. If that hearing vindicates the city's position, which I fully believe that it will, the city would be able to move forward and execute the contract with Kinder Care on that date. If, in the event the court determines otherwise, then there may be further orders from the court that may prolong the stay of when the city can execute that contract. How long that may be, I can't speculate at this time.
And what's the likelihood of you thinking, what's the likelihood that a judge will come in, or in the hearing, the other side is successful?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Gordado, thank you for the question. I feel confident in the city's position, and I think that, having, again, been in procurement law many years, like my opponent, Mr. Gribel, I believe that the city's process was appropriate here and that the city should be vindicated by the judge in the June 20th hearing.
Mayor and Councilwoman Gordado, I would just add, in the event that, for some reason, a court ordered against the city on this matter, what we would likely do is regroup as staff and then make a recommendation to City Council on next steps, which would likely involve, in my estimation, would be putting out another procurement for another childcare provider.
Great, well, I mean, thank you guys so much for that. But as a mom, when I hear these stories and I hear people coming and talking, like, you know, I always wanna make sure that my kids have the best childcare services themselves. So, I mean, but I also trust you guys, that you guys are making good decisions as you guys are moving forward. You know, again, you know, I wanna thank you, Chad, and the team, and everyone else that has made this happen, and thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you, councilwoman. There is a unique funding source for the capital on this project that has some deadlines. Could we speak to the use of American Rescue Plan dollars and what that means for the timeline and flexibility?
Thank you, Mayor, for the question. So, we actually, and this is a pretty innovative project, because we are looking to provide childcare for all airport workers, not just aviation department employees, but we do have skin in the game with this project. We are funding the construction of a shell, 3.7 million approximately of aviation capital funds, and that was primarily to keep costs manageable for anyone coming into what is a very untested space. And then we were very fortunate, thanks to the foresight of the City Council, to be able to apply $3 million in ARPA funds to the project as well to help the successful proposer build out tenant improvements. And because we were able to enter into an MOU with the city manager's office, and this is a specifically construction-related project, we have until the end of 2026 to expend those funds.
But first, the federal funds are the tenant improvements, so first we have to build...
Yes, Mayor, that's, that's correct, but that construction is underway right now.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Hodge, Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you again. I really am, I really believe in this project, and I'm happy to see us move forward. Unfortunately, we heard some, some feedback that seemed to question our procurement process. Can, can I ask us, can I ask that you walk me through the steps taken to ensure that this procurement process was competitive and transparent?
Thank you, councilwoman, for the question. So, we conducted this, and aviation has what they call a revenue contract solicitation, so I just wanna make the point that this is not a contract where we are paying for these services. The provider who's successful is going to have to be paying the aviation department for the opportunity. And we conducted that project, process as part of our normal procedures. We really promoted it in a variety of ways, and as was noted, we worked with First Things First to also promote this opportunity to all of their providers across the state, which I think was really important to stressing, that we get the kind of competition we need. There was some concern early on that we might not see any bidders on this because it's a unique and difficult project, and fortunately, we were successful. As had been mentioned elsewhere in the comments, we worked to really make it as flexible as possible so that providers could approach it the way that they needed to and that we were ensuring that we had good participation. And then we actually went through two panel reviews of this process to arrive at the same result of Kinder Care. So, we enpanned two different groups of reviewers that included both internal and external participants with expertise in these areas, and then also, because of the appeals process, had two separate reviews of each of those processes before we arrived here in front of you today.
So if I heard you correctly, and after you completed the initial process to pick the selective vendor, there was a protest or an appeal to that process, and you went through two independent appeals through two different bodies and came up with the same result, is that correct?
Yes, councilwoman, that's correct.
And my understanding, based on the testimony, I'm sorry, the statements we heard from the speaker, there is pending litigation that has been filed, contesting and challenging our decision. I'm going to look to council maybe to explain for, explain to me. One of the, my understanding is, one of the requests that was made by, or during the initial part of this litigation was for an injunction. Can you share your understanding of where that is currently from our perspective?
Well, I'll defer to the, our legal counsel, who's representing the city on that matter.
Madam Mayor, members of council, and Councilwoman Hodge, Washington, thank you for the question. We had a emergency hearing today with Judge John Hanna, Maricopa County Superior Court, and Judge Hanna denied the temporary restraining order that would have prevented this council from taking action on this particular item on the agenda, but put in place a temporary order that would prohibit the city from executing the contract with Kinder Care that lasts until June 20th. One of the conditions of that order, though, is that the litigant in that case, Phoenix Sky Care, post a bond by the close of business on Friday. And so as I understand, if that bond is not posted by the close of business on Friday, that the order would be automatically lifted. So that's the timeline that we're on currently.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna jump back up real quick, because I think it is an important part the mayor brought up regarding the source of funding for this and kind of what it is that this contract would entail. It is not only for the operation of the childcare facility, but it's also for construction management. I don't know if you see Matt or not, and if you wanna go further on that.
Yes, councilwoman, thank you for the question. Yes, so I have said this multiple times, I am not a parent. I do not generally spend time with children, so I need someone who is technically able to operate the facility, but neither am I an engineer or a construction expert. And so to have a successful project, we need a company that is able to build out tenant improvements. The tenant improvement process is very common for aviation in that we do that in the terminals when we're seeing refurbishments or change of concepts for concessions. And so we're managing that like we would that other process within the terminals, and the funds from ARPA are going to be used to support the development and build out of those tenant improvements.
And if we were to restart the process, we would have a very time, very limited timeframe in which to do so, otherwise we would forfeit, we would possibly forfeit those ARPA funds, correct?
There, I think, is the potential for that. We would, of course, work as quickly as we possibly could, if that was the outcome, to ensure that we didn't, but I do think that there is the potential.
And then we had, we heard from one speaker who shared a truly personal and unfortunate situation with concern in her child. I presume that as we move, if we move forward with this and we do contract negotiation, in that agreement, there would be some level of safeguards and requirements that we would expect from our service provider to ensure, or to limit those types of potential instances going forward, correct? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, councilwoman. So, we would be working through, and we were actually, even before we had proposals, working internally to make sure that the facility construction incorporated safety features that the airport already has as part of its overall safety posture. We also anticipate that we will have a security there and available as well. We'll be working with the successful proposer to determine quite how that works, but because this is first and foremost an airport, facility security is going to be a primary focus for us.
Thank you. I, again, feel like this is a great step to move it forward for our, for the, especially our workers at the airport, to provide them with the needed childcare. It's one of the, one of the needs we hear in our community, and I think we're doing, we're leading the way in this, and I applaud you for these efforts. So, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for your, thank you for leading this. I know this has been a project that you've worked on for some time. Thank you for, I wanna, again, thank my councilwoman, Betty Garrido, for that, and my predecessor actually started the conversation on this. So, I really think this is us taking valuable steps to meet the needs of our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have two quick questions. So just, my first clarifying question. If we vote on this today, that does not impact the coming hearing on the 20th, I think it's the 20th?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, and thank you for the question. That is correct. The judge did not prohibit the council from taking action on this agenda item today, so the council is free to vote on this item. And on the 20th, the court will have a hearing to determine whether or not the city can proceed with executing the contract with their service provider.
Okay. Also, just would like to reiterate that I support Councilwoman Guadalupe's point on extending the hours to, from eight, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., based on that information. So would love to see that worked into it. And then my other clarifying question. In the contract term, it says that the primary lease would be for 10 years with two five-year options to extend. Would those two five-year options be after the initial 10-year lease?
Yes, councilwoman, that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Guadalupe?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hodge, Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Item 94 is the acquisition of real property and related easements and licenses for the Capex Light Rail project. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve item 94.
Second.
A motion and a second. And I guess I do have one question on this one. So we are still doing some stakeholder work in this area? And we have some, some important conversations we're still having. We can finish those and get some good solutions before we move forward on this one?
Mayor, members of the council, yes. The way that the legislature filed is written, we're looking for the approval to start the conversation. However, we know that we're very young or very early in the design process, so the list that is part of the attachment A, we will be revising that list as the design progresses. And so right now, we're about a 60% design. We still have quite a bit of community input and stakeholder engagement that needs to be done before we can finalize a design. And so we will, this will allow us for properties that we have determined that are necessary for like signal buildings, traction power substations, things of that nature that we know that we'll need, regardless of how the final design is determined. It'll allow us the ability to start that process.
Okay, but we have some stakeholders we're still working out to make sure we can address the project and impacts on them, and we, I should feel comfortable voting in this, that we're not committing ourselves to anything until we've really got the details right.
Yes, this does not preclude us from looking at other options for the design that we're looking at right now. This does not pigeonhole us into one design.
Wonderful, thank you. Councilwoman Pastor?
Yes, I wanna make sure that it's on the record that we are not committing ourselves to this design, because there are several stakeholders that are not in line yet or in agreement with what we're doing, or how we're doing, or where it's going. And so I wanna make sure that, that I hear that this isn't set in stone, unlike some of the other pieces that I have had to deal with in the past, that was told this is what the community wanted. So I wanna, I wanna hear that.
Yes, Mayor, members of the Congress, members of the council, and Councilwoman Pastor, yes, you are correct in your assessment that this action today will not tie us to a design. It still gives us the flexibility that we need as we work with the stakeholders to determine what that final design will be and look like. It will give us that flexibility for us to start engaging with those stakeholders.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Marcus. And, you know, we've had conversations around the design piece of it, and I think it's really important, as the district that's gonna have this piece in it, that the most important stakeholders are the residents that are gonna be impacted by the light rail construction. So I appreciate that you are and have continued to seek input from the district on the design feedback. You know, I've been very clear that I wanna see a design that has the least impact of displacement to our residents, and still allows for the construction of the light rail so that can bring more public transportation options to our communities. But I think that we have to always make sure that we're centering the most important stakeholders, and that that is the residents of District 7 along this light rail construction. So, looking forward to working more on this and creating a really awesome design and avoiding the missteps that have, happened in previous projects by some of my form, down-the-line predecessors. So, thank you so much, Marcus.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Guadalupe?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hodge, Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark? Waring? O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Item 96 is the annual operations funding agreement with Valley Metro Rail for operational costs for light rail services for fiscal year '25-'26. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I move to approve item 96.
Second.
Roll call.
Thank you, Mayor, and if I may, I wanna correct. It was eight to one in the prior vote for 94. Councilwoman Waring voted no. I apologize. Okay, for 96, I will call the roll call. Thank you. Guadalupe?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Sorry, yes.
Hodge, Washington? Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark? Waring? O'Brien?
I almost said no, yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Thank you, eight-one.
Item 102 is the for official use only wording exemption for unmarked city vehicles. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I move to approve item 102.
We have a motion and a second. I understand this was originally pulled for public comment, but we do not have any, is that right?
Yes, Mayor.
All right. Roll call.
Guadalupe?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hodge, Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark? Waring? O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Item 104 is the roadway, road safety action plan, Safe Streets for All Revisioning Indian School Road Engineering Services. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve item 104.
Motion and a second. Stacy Champion.
Oh God, that's very loud, sorry. I just wanted to point out that this has been a really deadly, Indian school broadly is terrible and very dangerous. But for those who don't know, this portion affects 39th Avenue to 91st Avenue. And it is, it is for another study. And I just kind of don't understand, like especially because we know how dangerous this stretch is, because we know how many people have died, especially along this stretch, there's, there's just a need to study things that could be handled with some common sense, I think, a lot of the time. I don't see a timeline for these life-saving measures to actually be implemented. You know, I think we can go walk it. I'd like to see trees, some real traffic calming measures, pedestrian buffers, high-visibility crosswalks and stop bars, which we talked about at the last formal city council meeting. And I just, I just think it's been so long for a lot of, especially the ignored and underserved communities, to see like real improvements in action outside of maybe a hawk light here or there, that I would just like to see some quicker movement on, on some really common sense things to actually save people's lives. Thanks.
Thank you. Roll call.
Guadalupe?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Mayor, can I clarify? I'm a yes, but I think it is important for us to provide a timeframe or a timeline of this. This is something that we, that I voiced when we were talking about the reverse lanes as well. Thank you.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item 107 is Children's Museum of Phoenix expansion. Vice Mayor.
I move to approve item 107.
With motion and a second. Councilwoman Pastor?
Okay, 107. Yes, I'm excited to see this happen. Children's Museum always provides great adventure and fun, and most importantly, provides relief to parents as kids are laughing, jumping, exploring, and their acquisitive minds in action as parents can at least take a breather and, and watch. It brought great passion to my kids when they were little, especially my Eduardo, who has ADHD and cannot sit still. So I'm excited to see this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have a couple of questions, if someone can come to the dance. There's Mitch.
Hello.
I want to start off by saying I am very excited to see us expand the Children's Museum. It is, it's a cultural institution here in the heart of District 8, and it's an area where we have, last year, we held our, our holiday party for the community. So I really am excited to see the $4 million investment to our general bond obligation move forward. I think it shows our commitment to the city to strengthen in our youth enrichment opportunities and preserving our historic assets. This renovation will allow the museum to serve more families, host more educational programming, and create additional spaces for staff and community events. I want to say thank you to the Arts and Culture Department, as well as our city engineer, for moving this forward. I have a couple of questions about the anticipated process. Will the public be engaged in any way in the exhibit design or the use of the newly renovated space?
Thank you, Mayor Gallego, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, members of council. So this renovation piece that we are working with our architectural designers and then the construction manager at risk, will be to renovate and then white shell the building. The Children's Museum, through their own fundraising, will then begin the programmatic side of it. And they do have plans to engage families, residents, and because they're going to have 17,000 square feet of new space. So that will be on the Children's Museum. Our goal is to excavate the dirt room, get the asbestos out, and to make sure that all rooms are inhabitable.
And then the other question that I received on this was, is there a timeline for the pre-construction and construction phases? And will the museum remain open during this work, or will it be closed at some point?
So that is a great question, Councilwoman Hodge Washington. We are in the design phase, and we'll be getting into the pre-construction phase hopefully soon. The museum will have to remain open. They do close for some parts within the fall to clean and maintain spaces, but we are going to try to work with their schedule as best as possible, and that is the plan right now.
Thank you. Again, I'm very excited to see us move forward. This is one of the, one of the projects that our residents voted favorably for as part of the Go Bond campaign, and I'm grateful to see this investment move forward. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mitch.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am excited to see this move forward. We are definitely a Children's Museum family. This also protects a historic, important building in the city of Phoenix, a gorgeous building. And it'll be great to have the Children's Museum fully built out. We're so thankful to the voters of Phoenix for approving our general obligation bond package. This was an election where the majority of voters were actually over 65, and yet, time and time again, they invested in our kids, which shows some vision, I think, on the part of Phoenix voters. So grateful. Roll call.
Guadalupe?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Items 122 and 123 are related items. We will have one public hearing, but two votes. They are related to the northeast corner of 64th Street and Mayo Vollebarde. We will begin with a public hearing. We have a representative of the applicant available to speak if necessary. Would anyone like to hear?
Yes.
All right. We will close the public hearing. We'll begin with item 122. And just to clarify, the public hearing was on 122 and 123. Councilman Waring, do you have a motion? Motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call.
Guadalupe?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Wonderful. And Councilman, if you could do the next one a little closer to the microphone. Item 123.
Motion to approve the item per the planning commission recommendation noting the correction in the June 3, 2025 memo from the PDD director.
Second.
With motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call.
Guadalupe?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
And since we are a council that cares a lot about housing, I will mention, we have just enabled 1,400 units of housing. So continuing to be a city that prioritizes and having folks have a good place to call home, we will next go to item 124. Vice Mayor.
Sorry. Just do the motion. Mayor, I move to approve the staff, staff recommendation for item 124.
Second.
With motion and a second. We will first hear from the applicant. This is a citizen petition from Mr. Kim Baker. Mr. Baker, the floor is yours.
So I submitted a, I thought it took three minutes.
We have three minutes for the portion after this. This is, agenda items are two.
Okay, sorry. So the petition that I submitted, excuse me, all of the concerns were not answered. Like the private investigator, that, that person, he was not talked to by the police. Now, we're talking about a, a biased crime. The letter that I got said that I was a dead nigger. It was on my card, right? So this comes from Jerry Williams. She gave me this after the situation happened. She gave me this badge because she knew that it was wrong. And now, all of these concerns have come before the council, even though I know you decided against the petition. But I want you to reconsider. If you're called the N-word and they're trying to scare you, well, try again. I'm not the one guy, right? So I'm saying the petition should go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Councilwoman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, I wanted, I wanted to make sure that Mr. Baker understands the staff recommendation and had a chance to speak here, just in case. I wasn't sure if he was going to show up in person. And also, can staff get me his contact information so we can have, my office can have a follow-up conversation with him? Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman, we will do that.
Thank you. Thank you. Roll call.
Guadalupe?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you. We will now go to the final portion of the meeting where the speakers do get three minutes, and I'll turn to our legal team to explain public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. During citizen comment, members of the public may address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The citizen comment session is limited to 30 minutes. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the city council to listen to the comments, but prohibits council members from discussing or acting on the matters presented.
Thank you so much. We will begin with Leonard Clark, followed by Sean Bucknor.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. My name is Leonard Clark, and I'm from Arizona. I was born right down the street at the Good Samaritan Hospital. I guess they've renamed it now, but I'm deeply concerned, not only for the fifth largest city, our people here in the city of Phoenix, Arizona, but for the rest of Arizona, because very shortly, as somebody I don't agree with very often, Elon Musk has said something to the effect that we, the big beautiful bill, whatever the apparent wannabe king in the White House says it is, Elon Musk says that we have a disgusting abomination of this bill. And the reason I'm concerned is how it will directly affect our citizens. There will be people, and I actually listened to the scientists, the people who actually use scientific data, who will be kicked off of medical health care, your grandmas, your grandpas, your children, for the crime. Oh, they don't have as much money as Elon Musk, or the wealthy in the society people, they say, will die. And it looks like it's going to go through. The other concern I have is that, again, I guess, some people who apparently have forgotten their oaths to the Constitution, which comes first before the chief executive, are going to put in this disgusting abomination, I do agree with Musk on that, where the contempt orders from judges would be ignored, because apparently the chief executive would now become a king, a monarch. So I'm deeply concerned. I'm hoping that you're preparing too, because we don't know what he will do. He's already going after the judges. He flaunts the judiciary, because apparently, I guess, the Article III of the Constitution judicial branch is just not to be followed if you're a president. So I'm worried that you, as our city leaders, if you disagree or citizens, because we already have people being kidnapped off our streets by masked men, I'm worried that you will be arrested. And I, I just want to say here that I really thank people like Senator Kelly and Congressman Hakeem Jeffries and Congressman Ruben Gallego, and all three of those men, I really like Hakeem Jeffries, you know, but all of them would make good presidents of the United States of America. But people think it's not going to happen to them until it happens to you. And if it was a Democrat doing this, I'm an independent, I would say the same thing. So I'm concerned that some kind of contingency plans be made, because in the Ukraine, what Putin did, and I know Trump is following this method, they would go in and take over police stations. They would go over and take radio stations over. They would take basic terrorist moves that we learned about in grade school. So I'm hoping that you're preparing, because all throughout history, this is what tyrants have done. Knights of the Long Knives, we had this with, you know, in China. We've had this throughout history. So please be aware and prepare. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean is next, followed by Monica Barrientos. Sean, if you could just make sure you indicate.
He was here, right? He's supposed to be here.
Okay. Apparently, we do not have Sean. We will go to Monica Barrientos, followed by Stacy Champion.
I'm going to save, I'm going to save my time.
Okay. We have Stacy Champion, followed by Bina Constan.
I have three quick things. One, when is Nicole's petition for high-visibility crosswalks and stoppers going to be added to the TIPS Subcommittee agenda, so it doesn't fall through the cracks? Two, I want to put into the public record that I still have not received a scope of work from streets that is specific to the motion made by Pastor that was passed at the last council meeting with regard to the sevens rush hour reverse lanes, but instead received a draft scope that looks like a large, complex economic development land planning, land planning study with some traffic study comments sprinkled in. Three, I have numerous public records made to the city, some now almost two years old, that do not meet the prompt requirements of our public records laws. It's really frustrating. It's really ridiculous. There are many people like myself who have lost trust in the city, its management, and some of its leaders, because you do not behave in a way that is transparent, like blatantly ignoring public records requests from those people like myself who often ask questions and seek accountability. And so if I don't start receiving my public records request, I believe what I will have to do is, I think, file a special action with the Superior Court. And, I mean, nobody should have to wait two years for a public records request. Like, that's ridiculous. That's not okay. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Bina is next, followed by Mark Schaefer.
I'm going to save my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Schaefer is next, followed by Frank Urban. Mark Schaefer is next, followed by Frank Urban.
I'll yield my time to Philip Trotter.
And you unfortunately cannot yield your time, so if... Nope, you get your three minutes. So, tell us what is on your mind.
Okay. Okay. I didn't get to speak last month, because the time ran out. Looks like today, too, almost. But I just want to say thank you for helping out with the heat shelters, once again, because they're really, you know, we all appreciate that. And, um, I wasn't ready. And just, we're just keep trying to push for general funding for the homeless and the homeless communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank is next. Frank Urban, followed by Philip Trotter.
Hello, city council members. I'm Frank Urban with Fund for Empowerment, as many of you know. I am here today to reiterate the need for, well, first off, thank you for the heat shelters and stuff that you're doing for the homeless community. It's much appreciated by everyone, as I'm sure you... But that's just a start. You know, there are thousands of, thousands if not millions of homeless people out here in the city of Phoenix. And, um... I just want to say on the issue of the budget that you guys are voting on today, that, no offense to the police, I think they do a great job for the most part, but they don't need any more money. Matter of fact, if you guys could cut just like ten to fifteen percent of their salary and put it toward housing and medical and mental programs for the homeless, that'd be great. And also, there are a lot of unused buildings that have been shut down, not only in downtown Phoenix, but throughout the city. If you guys could reopen some of them and use them as shelters, that'd also be great. With that, I'll close. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Frank. Philip is next, followed by Elizabeth Venable.
Good afternoon, councilmen, mayor. My name is Philip Trotter. I'm one of those unhoused people your representatives were talking about. My life is worse today than it was within, what you see me in right now is all I own since I've been kicked out. They kicked me out for noncompliance. I'm still trying to figure that out. You know, they took my tools for a carpet, being a carpenter, put them in their shed. I can't even file, I can't even get a police to take my report because they have an attitude problem. I slept under a tree last night in a blanket. I don't know where I'm going to sleep tonight. I don't really care anymore. All I have to say is thank you for your help, because you sure have helped me well. Have a nice day.
Elizabeth is next. Estella Proxima.
Okay, so, um, you know, I do think it's important to, you know, we talked a lot about how you get a lot of cost savings providing social services. Obviously, I wasn't here for the last meeting. I wasn't feeling well, you know. But, you know, this is our thirteenth time talking to you all now that the budget's finally done, you know, this year, sort of on this topic. And I do appreciate that you guys did listen to us. You did make those allocations. And, you know, it is important to, though looking in the future, you know, it's important to assume that sometimes when residents ask for things like this, that actually, they have good intentions, and the logic behind them is actually sometimes strong, even if they can't articulate them with numbers, right? The fact that the individual cannot bring that argument doesn't mean that those arguments are not salient, right? And after a while, it's unfortunate that it takes almost an excess of, you know, mathematics or whatever to make these arguments in a way that they'll be listened to. But the content remains the same, you know. It's basically that you get value out of providing for human needs, especially human needs. You know, often sometimes the issues are, you know, not favorable to the public eye, or, you know, unpopular, or not charismatic, although they are flippable, I think, to say you've got this resource or whatever. You know, just because something is not charismatic doesn't mean that it doesn't always also provide, you know, good ability to manage budgets, you know. And I think it's important to consider requests, even for simpler things, that might even be less glamorous than what we normally want to, you know, fund as a city. You know, some things are shiny and glamorous, and some things are not. And, you know, I know that we were able to convince you guys partially because, you know, we're in here meeting in, meeting out, you know. And after a while, I do know if we stand up and make reasonable arguments, you know, especially with the shifting demographics of the city of Phoenix, there is more responsiveness, right? And, you know, so I want to encourage everybody who came out that maybe doesn't come out like every meeting, like, we basically almost come out every meeting in some way. If you come out and say numbers at them a million times, eventually, they might listen to you. But, you know, I'm not lying. I'm not lying, though. But I find it unfortunate, though, because, you know, a lot of the arguments are very simple, and the cost savings were already happening, whether or not they're articulated, you know.
Estella, and then Freddie.
Buenas tardes, miembros del Consilio. Mi nombre es Estela Varela. Soy residente de Phoenix, en el Distrito Cinco, y ahorita estoy sometiendo una petición de los ciudadanos. Resolución del alcalde y del ayuntamiento de la ciudad de Phoenix, Arizona, para comunidades prósperas, seguridad comunitaria para todos. Considerando que la ciudad de Phoenix se compromete a garantizar la seguridad y el bienestar de todos sus residentes, independientemente de su raza, origen étnico, estatus migratorio, identidad de género, salud mental o situación de vivienda. Y considerando que tras una investigación exhaustiva, el Departamento de Justicia de los Estados Unidos anunció sus conclusiones de que el Departamento de Policía de Phoenix y la Ciudad de Phoenix incurren en un patrón o práctica de conducta que viola la Constitución de los Estados Unidos y la legislación federal, incluyendo, entre otros, el uso excesivo de la fuerza, el trato ilegal a las personas sin hogar, la aplicación discriminatoria de la ley contra personas negras, hispanas y nativas americanas, las violaciones de la libertad de expresión protegidas y la discriminación contra personas con trastornos mentales. Y considerando que la discriminación racial por parte de las fuerzas del orden tienen consecuencias devastadoras para las personas, las familias y las comunidades, incluyendo, entre otras, detenciones injustificadas, encarcelamientos, deportación, pérdida del empleo, inestabilidad en la vivienda y separación de los seres queridos. Y considerando que el Comité adjunto de revisión e implementación de la alcaldesa Kate Gallegos recomendó el primero de septiembre de 2020, uno, implementar el aspecto de la recomendación, dos, de la CPTI, iniciativa de confianza en la policía comunitaria, para buscar al menor daño en infracciones menores, y la recomendación cuatro, para fomentar la confianza en la comunidad a través de las acciones del alcalde y el consejo, en una revisión de todas las políticas relativas del Departamento de Policía de Phoenix, actualizando aquellas políticas que priorizan las opciones, aplicaciones de la ley que causan el menor daño posible en todas las situaciones, incluyendo, entre otras, uno, dar prioridad a las opciones de citar y liberar frente a detener, frente a detener y enviar a la oficina del sheriff del condado de Maricopa. Dos, interacciones con las autoridades federales de inmigración. Tres, añadir el requisito de informar de la hora en que comience y termina una detención cuando se intenta contactar con el Servicio de Inmigración y Control de Adobanas, ICE. Número dos, publicar en el sitio web del Departamento de Policía de Phoenix las políticas relativas a las interacciones con las autoridades federales de inmigración, así como los contratos que celebra la ciudad en los que los agentes pueden interactuar con las autoridades federales de inmigración. Tres, una revisión de las ordenanzas municipales.
Good afternoon, city council. My name is Estela Varela. I'm a resident of Phoenix District Five, and I'm currently presenting a petition to the citizens, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Phoenix for thriving families, community safety for all. Whereas the city of Phoenix is committed to ensuring the safety and well-being of all its residents, regardless of race, ethnicity, immigration status, gender, identity, mental health, or housing status. And whereas the United States Department of Justice, following a comprehensive investigation, announced findings that the Phoenix Police Department and the city of Phoenix engage in a pattern or practice of conduct that violates the U.S. Constitution and federal law, including, but not limited to, excessive force, unlawful treatment of people experiencing homelessness, discriminatory enforcement against Black, Hispanic, and Native American individuals, violations of protected speech, and discrimination against people with mental health conditions. Whereas racial profiling by law enforcement has devastating consequences for individuals, families, and communities, including, but not limited to wrongful arrests, incarceration, deportation, job loss, housing instability, and separation from loved ones. And whereas Mayor Kate Gallegos' review and implementation ad hoc committee recommended on September 1st, 2020, one, implement the aspect of CPTI, Community Police Trust Initiative, recommendation; two, to seek least harm for minor infractions, and recommendation; four, for building community trust through mayor and council actions; and, a, a review of all policies regarding Phoenix PD, updating those policies that prioritize least harm options of enforcement in all situations, including, but not limited to, one, prioritizing site and release options over arrest and send to the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office; two, interactions with federal immigration authorities; and three, adding the requirement to report the time in which a stop begins and begins and ends where there is an attempt to contact Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE.
Thank you. Freddie is next, followed by Brianna.
Hello, my name is Freddie M., and I really don't want to bash the shelters, because right now, I'm currently standing one. It helps me a lot. But I had like a situation where my health was like in danger, and the services that they gave me was like horrible. It was like they didn't check on me, they didn't follow up on me or anything like that. It was to the point where like I had to just crawl out of, I was in SOS. I had to crawl out the tent and to the front, you know, to get some help. They didn't, you know, but they just started now. They checked the rooms and stuff. But the service is like a bad experiment. There's a bad spirit been going on out there. Oh, sorry. It shocked me in the face when I did it. But it's like a bad experiment is going on up there, you know. But I appreciate everything they're doing, but they're not following up. Okay, let's do this. This is a situation now that's happened at the shelter I'm at now. You know, we have three months to get in, get a job, and get out, right? And it was like a few people there that needed help, and they actually told the lady, because she used to have a mental problem, they told her to Google it, to Google it. And, you know, I just, I don't know, I just wanted to talk about some of the stuff that I was going through at the shelter, not to bash it or anything, but just to bring it to other people's life. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Brianna is next, followed by Miroz.
Good evening. My name is Brianna Valencia, and I reside in Council District Three. Today, I'm speaking in strong support of the resolution citizen's petition that is being submitted today. Because it's a necessary and urgent step toward justice in our city, this resolution will do three critical things. First, it will require police to issue citations instead of making arrests for nonviolent offenses. Second, it will block police from stopping or harassing people simply for being unsheltered or for minor violations, like sleeping at a bus stop. And third, it will ban low-level traffic stops that too often escalate and target communities of color. By adopting these changes, city council will be helping to reduce racial profiling, prevent unnecessary deportations, and push back against a mass incarceration crisis. It also sends a clear message that Phoenix won't stand for Trump's agenda of fear and hate. Thank you.
Thank you. Miroz is next, followed by Tony.
Good afternoon, council members. Yeah, my name is Meadows. I reside in District Six. And as you heard, there is a need for protection for the most vulnerable. You heard the communities that are directly impacted. We were here previously a couple weeks ago, right? And you all decided to increase the police budget to 1.2 billion. That seems like we're rewarding the police department. We know that they work with immigration. We know that they're separating communities. I hear you all talk about children and the safety of children in schools and SRLs, but are you thinking about the safety of the children's families and their parents who are in danger in our streets in Phoenix? Are you thinking about the safety of them once their family members are taken by ICE, specifically their parents? They end up in the system, and they end up without their family members. So, there is a lot of ways, and this resolution is a way for you all to think about the safety of not only children, but the constituents that look up to you and also voted for all of you to be in these positions. And if you look at this resolution, it's not just for people of color, right? We're talking about working-class people. We're talking for unhoused individuals as well. So, we are looking up to you for protection of what is happening. Unfortunately, in this Trump administration, a lot of us are in danger. And we're looking at you for that safety and protection and to respond back against this agenda.
Thank you. Tony is next, followed by Ben.
Thank you. With regard to the budget, I'm hoping there's going to be enough funding for housing, because obviously, there shouldn't be any cuts to any vouchers, because you got so many poor people that are living paycheck to paycheck. There's no way they're going to be able to afford the skyrocketing cost of rent that keeps going up every year. And with the, we're still waiting for the budget in Congress. So, I don't know if they're going to cut funding to the states, because that's what Trump wants to do, and take away funding for poor people in that area. And great job with the... And great job with the Cohen Centers, and especially the one, the 24-hour one that's around the corner. But if people get their housing assistance cut, there's going to be a need for a lot more of those, because even in the evening, people can get heat strokes in the summer, so, and thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Ben is next.
My name is Ben Loughlin. I'm a resident of District Five. I'm here today...
Could you pull the microphone closer to you, please?
Sure try. Here today to ask for your support for the resolution for thriving communities. This resolution is a critical step in defending not only immigrant communities, but makes Phoenix safer for all residents. Despite the best efforts of many members on this council and the Trump administration, Phoenix Police has a well-documented history of profiling people of color, unsheltered people, and transgender people as well. As the Trump administration policies terrorize working people, rip apart communities, and destabilize whole neighborhoods, elected officials in Phoenix have a responsibility to take measures to defend the residents they serve. There's elected officials here who claim that the Phoenix Police won't be used to carry out the mass deportation agenda of the Trump administration. The 58 people who were deported between January and March after being stopped by Phoenix Police proves otherwise. Wanting to end racial profiling is common sense. Wanting to keep neighborhoods and families stable is common sense. Wanting to ensure that your tax dollars and the tax dollars of your constituents are used for resources that make our communities stronger and healthier is common sense. Thank you in advance for doing the right thing, doing the common sense thing, and supporting this resolution.
Thank you so much. Ben is our final speaker. We are adjourned.
Didn't really struggle with a lot of the stigma or the lack of access to care, but looking at some of these panels from folks, you know, who passed away in the late 80s, early 90s, no one was talking about this. You know, it's such a privilege to be able to request the specific panels for the quilts from local community members who participated in making these quilts, you know, to see them on display, and then to see their friends and family actually get to experience, it's an emotional experience that is just very hard to describe. Folks are so grateful to just be able to see their loved ones' panels.